In the Select Board Meeting of June 22nd at 2020, please stand for the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
The vehicle can just take it.
Gotta get my flag here. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America, where we truly represent what it stands.
Under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, all. Please remain standing to honor our service men and women, serving our country both here and abroad, past and present. And please keep our heads bowed and still let's pray for our healthcare heroes, our frontline workers, everyone that's still involved in COVID-19. Thank you very much. I just want to say one thing, and I know we'll talk about it later before we get started. Thank you Dartmouth Town Meeting members for a wonderful opportunity. Thank you again, and we'll talk about it later. All right. So change of manager. I guess at the moment, we're going to be signing the warrant, by the way, Mr. McGinnis.
You need to vote to sign the warrant, correct?
Make a motion that we allow Mr. McGinnis to use our stamp to sign any warrants that are available that need to be signed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mickelson? Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Okay, you can sign the warrant first. All right. Change of manager, Allendale Country Club, Eric Farias, Farias, sorry. Eric, you're muted, buddy.
Still muted.
Eric, you're up.
Yeah, you're up. Change of manager. Introduce yourself, sir. Oh, he doesn't have a microphone.
I can't hear you.
He should have it through his car. Mr. Farias, can you hear us?
Yeah, but we can't hear you.
Can't hear you, though.
Do you want to give him a chance and we'll move to Chumley's?
All right, see if you can work that out, Mr. Farias, and we'll move on.
Change of manager, Chumley's, Lena Russo.
It's Leanna Russo, thank you.
Yep. Please introduce yourself and what you've been doing for Chumley's.
Yep, I am taking over as the general manager for Chumley's Restaurant, Leanna Russo.
Okay.
This is seasonal opening? You guys are seasonal or?
It's a seasonal opening.
Seasonal?
No, it's seasonal.
Okay.
And a little bit about your experience?
Yeah, I was a general manager for Papa Gino's a few years ago, and I was a manager for Sig Wannenrund Sun most recently.
Oh, great.
Make a motion to approve. Sorry.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. McDonald, the second by Mr. Gracie. Excuse me. Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson, yes. Approved, ma'am. Good luck. Good luck.
Yes, good luck.
Mr. Farias, are you there? Still having problems?
Oh, it's gotten worse.
Yeah. Change of manager, TGI Fridays, Stephen Davis. Mr. Davis, introduce yourself, please.
Is he here?
Think he's here. Ms. Russo, you can leave if you want.
Oh, okay.
Well, he's still having problems with his iPad ear. Mr. Farias, your microphone's not there.
Can you hear me now?
Hey, it's somebody.
Well, introduce yourself, we'll know who it is.
Eric Farias?
Ah, there you go, my friend. Oh, now you're off.
No, he's there.
Not really working too well here. Tried to get through my phone, but that didn't work. Let me try to fix this. Apologize for that, fellas.
Now, that's good.
So.
Don't touch it.
I'll stop touching everything. Sorry about that. Eric Farias, President of Allendale Country Club. Most, I've been in business with PepsiCo, an executive for 22 years now, and looking to have that name on the license changed over from Michael Gulart, who is our past president and still on the board, over to my name.
How are things going, by the way?
Good, really good. The course is really busy, and we're starting to get going with the restaurant and doing all the proper procedures and paperwork through the town, and making sure that we have all our ducks in a row, but as far as the golf course, doing really, really well. Thank you.
Great. You had a great, we got great weather. Encourage people to go out.
It is, it is. They're doing all their social distancing, so.
Yeah, that's great. You're doing a nice job. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. McDonald, second by Mr. Gracie. Mr. Gracie?
I just had a question. Question?
I didn't see your hand. I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's okay. Mr. Farias, you're designated as the manager as well as the president of the restaurant facility? How's that gonna work?
I am the president of the club, the manager we haven't put on. We have one manager on board right now. She is helping me work through all the details of getting all of our ducks in a row, and then we'll be getting more staff on board once we can open up in the proper way.
So what are we approving tonight?
The name on the liquor license over to my name from Michael Gulart.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson, yes. Good luck, Eric.
Thank you very much, fellas. Appreciate it.
Take care.
All right, that's all the appointments. So new business, BJ's Wholesale.
TGI Fridays?
We did that.
TGI Fridays is here, Stephen Davis.
Oh, there he is, yeah, okay. All right, so Mr. Davis.
Yes, I'll be taking over as a general manager at the North Dartmouth TGI Fridays. I have several years' experience. I was an assistant general manager at Buffalo Wild Wings, and I was also a manager at Ruby Tuesday.
Okay. Pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Gracie, second by Mr. McDonald. Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson, yes. Motion is approved, sir.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck, my friend.
Thank you. Have a great night.
All right, so now that we've got rid of all the bad connections, BJ's Wholesale placement of alcohol beverages.
I hope we got rid of the bad connections. I'm Artie Jones. I'm speaking on behalf of Mormax Corporation, which is the licensed entity for doing business as BJ's Wholesale Club Number 23 in town. And we are seeking no changes other than we would like permission to shift over the two aisles, the two rows, where we keep alcoholic beverages in the club, shift them over one row. So just move them over one rows length, I think it's 17 feet apart, and that's it. And that's all we're asking for permission for.
So those are the aisles in red? Is that the ones that are being moved?
Right, we provided that picture to Ms. Amaral, and the clouded, if the image you have has the clouded rows, those are the current location, and we would like to shift over to the two solid red rows. That's the shift.
I got you. But you're not taking over any more square footage?
Not taking over any more square footage, not adding or decreasing the count of items that we sell in those rows.
Any particular reason why you changed it?
So I have a couple of folks here with me. I'll attempt to answer. If one of them thinks I'm giving the wrong answer, they can certainly fill in. So the idea is just to align and locate our perishables, a couple of produce areas closer to each other. That's the only reason.
And I don't think the chief has any problems, do you?
I think we have a hand up, I think.
Mr. Gracie?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted, I got a little confused when I was reading the diagram. The red rows were clear to me, but I wasn't sure where the original rows were. So could you just tell me, is this towards the front or towards the back?
So the diagram's in the middle of the club. The original, the place where we're currently selling alcoholic beverages from are the two rows that have cloudy red line around them, a squiggly red line around the two rows.
I see them. You gotta magnify the diagram.
Yeah, I tried. I tried that. It still wasn't clear to me. I was getting dizzy. So just simply, are you moving more towards, you're moving one row towards the front of the store?
Yes.
Sorry. Oops.
And that was no help.
It got really, really, I see if I can do this.
Yeah, we have that diagram.
Yeah, I know, but the cloudiness is. Cloudiness is this one here and this one here. You want to take this one and this one and move it here and here.
Correct. Thank you.
Got it.
Okay. So my only comment is, and I think Artie, you were around at the time, maybe, we had a few instances with BJ's initially, moving product closer to the front door, moving whole displays at one point. And, you know, it really was disconcerting to me, considering the fact with alcohol in these type of vehicles. But I haven't heard anything in the last few years. I've been doing a great job, and just keep it up. I love BJ's.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah, I guess you could say we learned from that, and we don't have any plans of putting alcohol anywhere other than these two solid red rows.
Thank you. We appreciate it. It's nice to work together.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve and a second. Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald, Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson, yes. Motion to move has been granted. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Recruit graduation from the police academy. Chief Levecq.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. When I last appeared before you regarding my request to begin the process of filling the three police officer vacancies, I was granted conditional offers of employment for Brandon Baptiste, Bryce Boswell, and Christopher Sakali. I'm pleased to report back that all three candidates have successfully completed the remainder of our hiring process. And on this past Friday, June 19th, these recruits graduated from the MPTC Police Academy, and they have now met all of the requirements for becoming permanent full-time police officers. I've asked the candidates to join us this evening in the event you have any questions or comments for them. I would like to recommend that they be appointed as full-time police officers in the town of Dartmouth. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Members of the board. Mr. McDonald always likes to talk about this, so I'll let him go first, Frank.
Thank you. First of all, I want to make a motion that we appoint, I'm on the second page, Brian Baptiste, Bryce Boswell, and Christopher Sakali as full-time police officers for the town of Dartmouth.
I want to second that, but I'd like to hear a little bit from each of the assistant officers.
We'll just do a second from Mr. Gracie, and then before we vote, we'll.
You're not getting off easy, that's for sure.
All right, Frank, is that good for you? You'll be the second, but we'll not vote yet.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yes, great, thank you. Just to move the thing along.
Sure.
But I just want to just say, this is a little bit different than previous past because because of the times, what's going on right now. You guys are entering in a job that probably in community feelings probably is not one of the best. But you have to know that the five of us support our police department, and we honor and respect the work that they do. And you're following in some footsteps of some officers in this town that have done yeoman's work over the years, and we expect nothing but the best and the respect from you. And also towards, you know, our citizens and those who come into our town to conduct business, whether it be personal or pleasure. So I applaud your service and only wish you the best in the future. I also wish your families the best, because you cannot do this job without the support of your family and your loved ones, because they provide you with a safe haven after the job. And that in itself is remarkable, as any police officer will attest to. So with that, I would like to probably go in alphabetical order, since we have Baptiste as a BA or a BO, and then an SA. If you could just introduce yourselves to the community, reintroduce yourselves to the community, and what you basically have entailed so far.
Hello, everybody. My name is Brandon Baptiste, and I grew up in the town my whole life, went to Dartmouth High School, and then continued on to Roger Williams University, and just looking forward to learning a lot on the police force and getting ready every day.
Thank you. Bryce?
Chairman, members of the Select Board, my name is Bryce Boswell. I graduated Dartmouth High School in 2016, and then went on to Bridgewater State University. I graduated in 2019, sum cum laude, with my Bachelor's Science in Criminal Justice. I've been a town meeting member in the town since I was 18 years old, senior in high school in the precinct, in the fourth grade. Very committed to the town, look forward to serving this community, blessed to be a part of the Dartmouth Police Department. I've been nothing but supportive through our academy experience. Couldn't ask for a better place to work, a better profession to join. My father's a New Bedford police officer, and my brother's a state trooper, so it's our family business, and I'm happy to be here, and thank you guys for the support along the way as well.
God bless them.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Chris Sakali. I also have grown up in Dartmouth my entire life, graduated from Dartmouth High School in 2007. I went on to Bridgewater State, graduated in 2012. I had the honor of working on the Payden Aaron Bridge from 2007 until about 2013. I've spent the last several years in sales, always with the scold to get into law enforcement. So it's a pleasure to finally serve my community. Over the last 25 weeks, we've been in Plymouth at the academy. We had about a seven-week hiatus where we had online Zoom classes, such as this meeting, to fulfill our requirements. But we're all looking forward to getting on the road and protecting this community.
Thank you, gentlemen. Anyone else? Any comments? Mr. Tattelbaum?
Thank you. Fellas, congratulations. You have a leader, been Chief Levecq, who's open-minded, aggressive, passionate fellow, who's done so much for our town as a police chief in such a short time. We're not Chicago in a big city where there's all kinds of different kinds of problems, but we're Dartmouth, and we can stand proud to make sure that we move our policing in an area that's acceptable and moving forward. And it's a proud moment for you and your families, and thank you for joining up, and we look forward to working with you seeing around town. Congratulations.
I too. You'll not find another person on this board that supports the police department as I have consistently over the years. They're one of my main concerns every day, and especially now during this period, my main concern every minute of the day. You got a brand-new police station, something that a lot of recruits never inherited. So you've got a brand-new police station, you've got the best police chief in New England and his team. They put together a team that by far is something to be, something to be proud of, and you guys will be better policemen for it. Just listen to them. So make yourselves and your family in the town proud, and God bless you. So we have a motion and a second. Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson, yes?
Can I make a comment, please?
Yes, sir.
I just want to congratulate them and wish them the best of luck in their pursuits of career.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So do I. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Just thank the Select Board for that vote and also your continued support, especially during these trying times. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. That being said, okay. Next up, David Hickox, water and sewer rate increase. Mr. Hickox, you have the floor. Or you have the Zoom.
Thanks. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thanks for having me, and I hope you're all well. I had forwarded over a summary of notes that I could run through for you this evening, if that's your pleasure. If not, I can get right to, you know, the nuts and bolts of the water and sewer rate.
Nuts and bolts.
Get to it, Mr. Hickox.
All right. You know, again, just to step back for a second, there are three components. First two, the O and M, and the town charges are relatively stable year after year. And what drives the rate historically is the debt service. And as you can see, looking at our water projects in recent years, so let me just step back as well. Typically, our capital improvement plan, we have two types of capital projects. We have small, short-term projects that we tend to fund through retained earnings, and then the larger projects, we normally borrow. We borrow over long term. So you'll see recent town meeting borrowings under the water section. In water, we have a 10-year water master plan, and that guides us as to what we need to do based on hydraulic models, for instance, to determine fire flow deficiencies or pressure deficiencies. And that is programmed into our five-year capital plan, which the Select Board, the Finance Committee, see. So if you look at some of the most recent projects that we borrowed for, you'll see Rogers Street, Milton Street, Lucy Little Road. All three have recently been reconstructed, but prior to that reconstruction, we upgraded utilities. In the case for Rogers Street, we had fire flow deficiencies in that section of town. Milton Street, we had aging and water quality issues. Lucy Little Road was a critical loop we needed to connect, interconnect our two of our water treatment facilities. All that work takes place before we reconstruct a road. Some of the other smaller projects, Seawater Hill, Seawood, Melrose Day, Prospect, Allen Street Standby, these were all projects we had anticipated as part of our 10-year water master plan. The next section, you'll see two projects. You'll see the Violet Well Nuance Approval, Violet Well Replacement, as well as the dreaded trihalomethane issue that we've been contending with over the past couple of years, two or three years. Those projects were never plugged into a 10-year master plan. And as a result, these type projects that come up and we haven't planned for are the ones that tend to drive increasing debt and typically increase in water and sewer rates. So we've done a pretty good job over the years of balancing our debt. You know, when we bring on new debt, we try to do that as we're retiring old debt. And in that way, we maintain a stable debt value over time. It does fluctuate, you know, from year to year, but normally we can manage that through normal rate increases. So if you look through here at the water debt service impact, over the next three or four years, we're going to see an increase in debt in the amount of $575,000. So that's the bad news. The good news is when you look at the current debt service schedule, you'll see that we are retiring debt. In fact, this year, our debt drops $200,000. So in '20, it was $814,000. It has since dropped down this year, July 1, it'll drop down to $615,000. Next year, there's a minor drop, and then it drops down roughly another $100,000 in '23. So in a perfect world, we would be bringing in these new scheduled projects as this debt is being retired. Unfortunately, the Violet Well project and the trihalomethane projects are projects that we couldn't put off, we couldn't program. So as a result, you'll see that the net rate revenue increase for debt service over the next three years or so will be $278,000. So when we see that, we need to plan for that, and we do that by making incremental adjustments to the rate. So if you look at the water rate, for example, the first 1% of that is for fixed costs, as far as operation and maintenance in, I'm sorry, in town town services. Anything over that is normally to address debt. And so when we are looking at an increase of $278,000 in the next three years, over the next three years, we need to plan for that. Let's look at the sewer for a similar situation in the sewer. Again, we try to fund our smaller capital improvement projects through retained earnings, large projects through debt service. Yesterday's town meeting, I'm sorry, Saturday's town meeting may have been a little different, where we had expended $1.6 million in retained earnings for some actually fairly large capital projects, and some smaller ones as well. So similar to water, let's look at recent town meeting borrowing articles. The biggest one was an article that we funded five or six years ago in the amount of $10,650,000. That was phase one of our 20-year comprehensive wastewater master plan. Similar to water, on wastewater, we look at a 20-year planning period versus a 10-year on water. So the projects that are driving debt moving forward are associated with the second phase of our CWMP. Biggest part of this second phase is the design and the upgrades of our blowers and our aeration system at the Water Pollution Control Facility. That system is the heart of the facility. It's essential that it is upgraded so we can continue to meet federal permits. You don't meet a federal permit, you enter into a consent order, which is what we currently have in our water division as we address the trihalomethanes. So similar scenario, the next three or four years, we'll see our debt service increase by $265,000. The difference here is that we have a relatively level-funded debt service over the next several years. It's come up $100,000 this year, and then it's relatively level for the next several years. The net rate revenue increase for debt service over the next three or four years will be in the amount of $352,000. Again, similar to water, we need to plan for that now with these incremental increases in the rate. That incremental money revenue ends up in retained earnings, and again, that allows for us to continue to reduce future debt by paying for capital improvements through retained earnings, but also if need be, the retained earnings can be used to pay debt service down. On the sewer as well, on the water and sewer, both are impacted by recent union negotiation settlements that were not taken into consideration on this fiscal year. Finally, I wanted to just go over the five-year water and rate review. You'll see that in the past five years, most of the rate increases have been on the water side. And again, this is to fund the ongoing capital and projects that we have. Most of them in distribution and now we're shifting over to the treatment and the, and the Violet Well replacement. On the sewer, you'll see in '16 or '17, there were no increases. And what that reflects is that in '16 and '17, the Sewer Enterprise Fund had adequate retained earnings and we had no indication that we'd have any type of dramatic increase in debt service in the coming years. If you look at the average over the last five years, on water, the, the increase has been 2.8% per year. And on sewer, it's been 1.3% per year. And then finally, I wanted to share this information. Tyon Bond is an engineering company in New England, a consulting firm. And every three or four years, they put together a study of water and sewer rates in Massachusetts. So the most recent one was fiscal '18. And I wanted to share with you that the average annualized cost of water in Massachusetts is $595 a year. For sewer, it's $862 a year. If you look at local communities, again, we don't look at the cities because they tend to be supported through general funds. But if you look at Fairhaven and Mattapoisett, for example, Fairhaven Water in fiscal '18 was the average annualized cost was $684 a year. Mattapoisett was $1,128 a year. In Dartmouth was $476. On the sewer end, Fairhaven Sewer in, in FY '18 was $848 a year. Mattapoisett was $820. Dartmouth was $450. So it, when, again, we, we see this study every three or four years and, and we're always just a little under the, the state average. And again, that's what the, the most recent study reflects. And then finally, on May 13th, when the board adopted a 3% rate increase for water, a 3% rate increase for sewer, they also adopted no increase on the solid waste enterprise fund for pay-as-you-throw solid waste system. And I'd like to share the good news on the solid waste enterprise fund and the good news there is we have zero debt. We pay for all capital expenditures, all capital equipment is through rate retained earnings. And we're pleased that the rate for the solid waste enterprise fund seems to be in, in balance, excuse me, with the operation and maintenance, the town overhead and the, you know, the fact that we don't have debt service. Have any questions?
Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, it's generally not so much as the questions, is that, you know, I, I think when, whenever the DPW board decides to do increases, you know, we should be notified accordingly, but with, you know, the, the basis of the information as to why. Because ultimately, the board members don't get the phone calls, we get the phone calls. And I would love to legitimately and I, and intelligently articulate the reasons behind it. And I think that just makes it better, a better way of doing things and a better way for people to understand why, why things happen. I mean, it's just, you know, I, I see the reasons. You know, and I, I think this is something that, you know, everybody should at least have an opportunity to look at. And I, I, that's, that's the only reason. And I'll be honest with you, David. The, the presentation you made and the material that you submitted, you know, I mean, it's right there in black and white. You know, so I appreciate that very much.
Anyone else? Mr. Gracie?
I have a question on a slightly different subject, but since David's here, I figured I'd ask him. I heard somewhere or read somewhere that I'm right. That's, that's not what I had heard.
Well, we heard.
What I, what I heard was that the, uh, we, we don't, we know that recycling has not been as profitable, has not been profitable at all over the last two, three years, whatever it is. But I read somewhere that paper was turning around, it was becoming more desirable. Is that true?
You, you know, it's funny you mention that because I did receive an email this morning on, on the cardboard, that the cardboard had turned around and we were going to start seeing additional revenue for the cardboard. You know, I'm hoping that's the case. You know, we historically generated revenue for the enterprise fund through the sale of recycled material. And unfortunately, it has turned the other way dramatically over the past three or four years. But yeah, that's a good sign.
Good, good. Thank you very much.
I mean, with all the Amazon and UPS shipping, um, yeah, cardboard is, I know it's filled the bins well pound, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Quick, quickest turnaround going. Mr. Tattelbaum?
I could add on the cardboard issue, I was approached and actually was delivered on the promise that some fellow actually called and they picked up a cardboard, bailed today and actually said he would pay us some, pay us for it, which is the first time that I can remember maybe years and he picked it up.
Do you recall how much he said they'd pay?
Hundreds of thousands. I, I don't know.
I asked because the number, I asked because the number we received today was $15 a ton.
I'll let you know what it is. I, I couldn't miss by taking it, having to pick it up, so he picked it up, so we'll see. But I think it's a good sign. It's a good sign.
So do we, uh, do we need to vote on this increase?
Oh, no, you were just looking for some more detail.
Right, okay. Mr. Hickox, as usual, thorough and to the point. Thank you so much.
For sure.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Yes, thank you very much. Take care.
Take care.
All right, line item transfer, veterans and unemployment. Mr. McGinnis?
Mr. Barnes is going to present this line item transfer for two accounts.
Oh, boy, look at that. Nice.
Oh, I have two light item transfers. One involves unemployment and the other one involves veterans. The first one, for, let's, let's do unemployment first. We currently have only received bills through January. We typically receive bills on a monthly basis. So while we still have a surplus in the account, we do not know what the bills for the next several months are going to be. And you're supposed to pay expenditures of this year with monies from this year. So we, what we're proposing to do is set aside $100,000. We may not need anywhere near that amount. Again, hard to tell, given the fact we haven't received the bill since January. Should we not need those monies, they would go back to the general fund. Why would we have increased unemployment when we still have maintained our workforce? First of all, keep in mind, we pay unemployment for the schools. Secondly, to the degree people may be let go and there's a bad economy out there and they can't find opportunities that in a stronger economy, they, they could. It ends up costing us more because basically we owe them more in terms of unemployment than they, we otherwise would should they find employment elsewhere. So I'm asking that you approve this light item.
So we have a balance, am I correct, 214,281.44, right?
Uh, yes, I'm having, uh, I'm having a little trouble, my computer here is not.
Yes, that's what it is.
But it's what's on the form there.
Okay, great. Yeah. So we need to vote on that?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
And I should state that it will also, they're all, it will also involve a vote of the FINCOM. Both of you have to vote on it for it to go through.
Yep.
Make a motion that we authorize the transfer of $100,000 from the debt service interest on debt account to the unemployment insurance account.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the transfer for 100,000. Mr. Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum? Mr. Mickelson? Yes. Okay. So you're all set there, Greg?
All right, the, the second one involves the veterans account. Understand that we, uh, under state law have to provide certain benefits to veterans and their spouses who qualify. That, what, what we provide is dictated by the Veterans Department of the State. It can be very variable from year to year, depending on how many veterans apply. Should state it can also be their spouses in a lot of cases, particularly older veterans. They, they may no longer be with us, but their, their spouses are. Secondly, the Veterans Department sets the amount of, of certain benefits and every year they, they do increase that. So there's usually a COLAR built in also for things like burial. I know they, I believe it was just a year or so ago, 2,000, now it's 5,000 and so on. So we have a deficit this year. The amount I'm asking for is just a little above what we actually know we, we have to, to spend or have spent. We've also increased next year's budget to reflect the fact that this may continue into the future. And we did have some issues in the past, again, highly variable, it can be, it, 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 it can be very variable as to, to how much is owed. And I should stress that 75% of what we spend is reimbursed by the, the state of Massachusetts. So we're asking for 92,500.
And with a balance remaining of 214,281.44.
In, in, in the debt service account.
Correct. Yep, correct.
It's half to both these transfers, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Make a motion that we authorize the transfer of 92,500 from the debt service interest on debt account to the veteran services other account.
Before a second, Mr. Gracie?
Sean, I may have missed, did you say that, that's the amount we have remaining in the debt service? If you take this, what you appropriated here and the other one, it, it would be the minus those two. So that would be what would be left in debt.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Gracie had his hand up before we've got a second.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question, clarification question. I used to remember this a lot better when I was on the FINCOM because we did this regularly. I, I know it's 75% and you mentioned that, but is it 75% of all costs associated?
It's 75% of all costs that they approve. So I understand, and, and we basically don't provide anything beyond, beyond what they approve. So I believe it's, I, I'm not aware of any instances where it's not reimbursed. Now, of course, if we do something, say we buy memorial flags or something else that aren't within the benefit, the, the actual benefits, that may not be reimbursable.
Okay, and is the state slowly, still slow on their reimbursement?
We do not expect to get that money this year. Hopefully sometime next year.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I, I second the motion, just.
Well, we have a motion by Mr. McDonald, second by Mr. Gracie for the transfer of 92,500. Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson? Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mickelson, so the select chair needs to sign off on these forms, but do you want to vote to stamp them or do you want to come in and?
I'll go by tomorrow. I'll do it.
Okay.
I'm going to be there anyways.
You just need your signature, that's all.
Yep, thank you. All right.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you again, buddy. All right.
By the way.
FEMA flood map rescinding.
Yes, this is, this is already, yeah, water under the bridge because it's not approved at town meeting. But this was the letter sent from FEMA notifying the towns that they are rescinding their requirement for the towns to approve the new maps. Fortunately, the towns that had already approved them would have to have a special town meeting to rescind them, so we didn't have to do it, so.
Thankfully, we didn't.
They, they finally found out there was a COVID virus problem.
Yeah, they were adamant about it, remember?
You understand that, but.
They were adamant about it. All right, so, so interesting. Finally, after quite a bit of time here, charter review committee creation discussion.
Yeah, so the charter is required to be reviewed every 10 years. The last time it was done is 2010. I put together a framework here of what's the requirement, what's involved. As you can see, last done in 2010, the Charter Review Committee, as required by the charter, is nine members, two appointed by the select board, two appointed by the finance committee, two appointed by the school committee, one appointed by the planning board and two appointed by the monitor. I have a note here too, that your person's appointed by each committee or board may not need, may, but need not be members of the board or committee. So you can elect or appoint one of yourselves or the other committee members can do the same. The procedure for creating a charter review committee, it needs to be published that the town is seeking individuals interested in being on the charter review committee. I was thinking we would do that online, social media, newspaper, if the board approves. And applicants would be required to submit a letter of interest and qualifications to be on the charter review committee. I have another note here that is a very long process, going from 2020 into the fall of 2021. So the, just the applicants need to be aware that it is, it is a bit of a commitment. Once the select boards receive statements of interest, the list will be distributed to all the appointing authorities. So we'll, we'll centralize them and then distribute them. And then once the committee is in place by all the members, then they will decide how they want to go through the process of their charter review. So. And I, they have some other notes in here that, you know, each charter review change requires a separate article at town meeting that needs to be voted on. And if approved, it needs to go to the ballot for approval at the ballot.
And you have a timeline here?
Starting now, after spring town meeting and forming the committee in the fall, they would have recommendations at spring town meeting. And then fall of 2021 would be the articles.
And this is a long. Uh, Mr. Gracie?
Yeah, I, I just want to be sure when we, if we agree to solicit that we're very thorough about the length of it so that halfway through, we don't have people dropping off.
Right.
I'm sure you would do that anyway, Mr. McGinnis. I just want to, I just want to emphasize that. It's important that people understand totally what they are signing up for.
It's a long process.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a big commitment.
It was last time, so it's hard, it's hard to believe it's been 10 years already.
Yeah, seems like yesterday, huh?
Yeah, it does.
Sharon?
Mr. Chairman, I was on the last committee and I'd like to be on this committee going forward.
Let's just, let's form the committee first and then we can worry about appointees later.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Question, is, is, as I recall from last time, is, is if we, if we chose to do a, an elected charter commission, then that what they, then what they would have done would be, would be, would turn it into law? Is that?
Cruz?
So there's, there's two really unrelated processes. The, the voters can petition to create an elected charter commission. That is done solely for the purpose of basically changing the form of government. From elected to, to open town meeting or vice versa. Do you want to go from a select board to a town manager, town council forum or a mayor, city council forum? Those, only elected commission can do those things. Everything else only requires town meeting appro- Everything else only requires town meeting approving by two-thirds the amendment, and then the voters approving it by referendum at the election. Um, so, uh, the, the selectmen cannot, you guys cannot create an elected charter commission. Um, that's different process entirely. Um, additionally, you are required by the charter to create this review committee in two thousand and twenty. It's, it's a, it's a mandate. Um, the review committee doesn't have to end up doing anything, but it has to be created. Um, essentially, it was, a- again, we weren't involved in writing the charter, but the way it seems to be is because typically there are two ways that you can amend the charter, uh, to do things other than changing the form of government. You as the select board can always propose charter amendments to town meeting whenever you want, at any warrant. You guys always have the prerogative as a select. Secondly, uh, voters or certain, uh, town officials can petition uh, to have it placed on the warrant as well for town meeting. Um, but in this case, every ten years, we have to create this committee and that committee gets to put whatever warrant articles it wants on the warrant relating to the charter. Um, so that's, that's kind of, that's not a statutory process. That's entirely based upon our charter that it creates that. Um, so from a statutory process, really all it is is getting into town meeting and then it follows the normal course of events. But everything related to the review committee is entirely based upon our charter. Um, and, uh, they basically have carte blanche to put whatever they want on the warrant, um, once they have decided on what they want. Um, and then it requires, as I said, two-thirds vote from town meeting, followed by approval by the voters. And anything they would do would be, um, on the margins, you know, um, combining boards, taking boards apart, uh, putting different, uh, powers in different boards or changing their composition, um, things like that, as long as it doesn't change the nature of the town's government.
Uh, a follow-up?
Still, Tattelbaum.
I, um, obviously, uh, there had to be a move, uh, from the people up to, 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 to form a charter commission, uh, an elected charter commission. That's, uh, obviously has not happened. And there doesn't seem to be a, um, appetite for a major reconstruction of our town government at this point in time, which I certainly agree. However, as I recall last time, it was really broad-based. They touched all kinds of categories. It was a huge document and it seemed quite cumbersome. Um, are you saying that as a select board, uh, we, we, we can't or shouldn't or aren't allowed to give some kind of direction as to focus on certain kinds of areas?
You have every right to give them what you believe should be their focus, but ultimately you can't constrain them in terms of what they present to town meeting, other than if you know of certain people you want to put on the committee that think, that you think will be sort of in accord with your thinking on that. But ultimately, that committee, you as the select board under the charter are obligated to put on the warrant whatever their recommendations are for charter changes. And that, and they can look at the entire scope of what possible amendments are allowed under the Home War Amendment and statute in terms of the, the scope of those potential amendments. They're not limited by your directive.
I just, I for one would, would, I think the best value getting out of this is not to just send this out to a group and hit every corner of, of every possible change that they can think of, as opposed to being as focused as we can be and, and providing some kind of grouped, um, uh, some kind of direction and try to get, make it meaningful in terms of targeting certain kinds of areas. That's how I feel.
And, and there's nothing to bring you from doing that. They're just ultimately not beholden to it if they choose not to be.
Okay, thanks for Brian.
Mr. Gracie.
Yeah, I, I would, I, I agree with what David said, and I would point out that, uh, I was, I was interviewed during the last one because I was chairman of the finance committee. And I think that we should have some involvement, whether it be just helping after the committee is set up to give guidance or we provide them with a document or, but we could talk about that, but I agree with it completely. But, but I would make the motion that we stop the, uh, solicitation process for an appointed charter committee as soon as possible and in as many venues as possible.
Second.
Second, by who?
Me.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I missed you.
It was me.
I was writing, I'm sorry. Okay, so we have a motion, uh, by, uh, Mr. Gracie and a second by Mr. McDonald to.
Could, could you repeat that?
To move forward on the charter review process, two thousand and twenty. Mr. Gracie.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson, yes. So we move forward. That'll be exciting.
It could be. It, it may not be, but it could be.
Well, I'm gonna think of it as exciting.
Good for you.
I think it has great potential, great potential.
Yeah, it does. Yeah, I mean, we, we can do a lot, accomplish an awful lot.
I think, I think if you look at, we're, we're putting together a ten-year plan now and a charter commission, it's a pivotal year that we can do a lot of things, uh, concise planning that really have meaning and teeth to them, uh, if we really want to push in those directions.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, 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 hopefully we get some, some new voices that have a, a different perspective or additional perspective. I, I would assume that when people volunteer, that we would get to interview them, uh, and ask, ask questions about why they're interested and what their background is and that kind of stuff. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Alright. And done the charter review, no? Alright, um, next is outdoor seating fee discussions. Uh, okay. Conserve, uh, last meeting, we had a conversation about this. We have, uh, granted permits with fees paid of eight hundred dollars. Um, I'm not gonna go over all, well, I can do it. Caskin-Pig a hundred and twenty-five, IHOP twenty-five, Joe's Original one twenty-five, Stackhouse one twenty-five, Lolly's twenty-five, New Bedford Country Club one twenty-five, Pub Ninety-nine one twenty-five, Brazilian Grill one twenty-five, for a total of eight hundred dollars. Um, we have still on this, sorry, this report, I don't know if it's changed, it says, waiting for approval, fees paid, Faze one hundred and twenty-five dollars, Farming Coast one hundred and twenty-five dollars, Texas Roadhouse one hundred and twenty-five dollars, and as of this, this printing, uh, Max's zero received and Silvia, Silviala, uh, zero. So, Mr. Gracie, you and I had a conversation about this. I appreciate to listen to what you could suggest.
Sure, I was, uh, the first thing I want to report is that, uh, the ones that you just mentioned that are still pending, I, I have not seen yet. There are issues with each and every one of those applications of some sort. Uh, everything for people that don't want to pay any money to things that have been, uh, planned that are inappropriate. So, so those things are being worked out by the people that have approved things before it get to be, so.
This is, this is official, the, the, this still stays.
Yeah.
As we have it, in front of.
E- e- everyone that I've seen already, I've approved, uh.
Great.
We, we had some issues to work through, uh, requested a different plan in a couple of cases, uh,
Yep.
And I, I got some additional information, but I ended up approving all those. Uh, what, what I was thinking and you were thinking simultaneously, it was interesting that we had that conversation, that it seems it would be a nice gesture, uh, for the select board to waive at least a twenty-five dollar fee for, especially now the restaurants are opening, but to waive the twenty-five dollar fee, uh, to show some empathy to their situation, uh, for, uh, people that still want to, uh, do it. I, I would assume that some still want to because, uh, they're not going to get full capacity of their indoor dining, so this could certainly be a supplemental income. So, so, so roughly what I had in mind was eliminating the twenty-five dollar fee and, and cutting the fee for the alcohol in half is what I was thinking.
And that would be, in my opinion, we could issue that as a credit towards next year's fees to be paid, instead of the town cutting checks for all this.
Yeah.
McDonald.
Look into that if we're.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cruz.
Mr. Just, uh, Mr. McDonald, do you need me, uh, Mr. McGinnis, do you need me for anything? Am I good?
Uh, no, I think we're good, Brian, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Uh, Mr. McDonald.
Thanks, Brian.
The difference in the price between, um, twenty-five and one twenty-five, that has to do with the liquor license, correct?
Correct. That's twenty-five for the outdoor seating.
Right. It, does the ABCs, does the ABCC have any requirements with an outdoor license that's imposed upon the communities of the Commonwealth to, um, to impose, you know, to, to charge?
For, for this supplemental part, they actually have nothing to do with it, except that they be informed what we decide to do.
Okay.
Similar to the outdoor seating application, it's, it's more involved, there's more, more, uh, information to fill out, but it's essentially, um, very similar in the, uh, responsibilities in the town stands, the local licensing authority.
So why don't we give Lolly's and, um, IHOP a credit for twenty-five dollars each towards two thousand and twenty-one permits and cut the rest of them by fifty percent?
Or just the outdoor seating.
Not making, I'm not making that as a motion, I'm asking, I'm just bringing that up as a s- suggestion.
I'm, I'm wondering if that's easier than just, uh, let it go through the process and, and give them the money back in their hands right now. I,
Yeah.
I'm, I'm wondering, I'm just wondering, that's all.
Well, I mean, we don't have to cut checks that way. It's not, it's not gonna make or break any of them for twenty-five or a hundred and twenty-five or seventy-five bucks. So it'd be easier for us to not spend the money to cut the checks, I guess.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm wondering. I'm wondering if.
Is that a problem?
I, I wonder if it's harder for Greg and his organization to do it that way as opposed to.
Yeah.
Being cut.
What would be the easiest and most, uh, effective way to do it financially?
Uh, it'd be difficult to cut a check to reimburse them, so we can try to apply as a credit, uh, next year when they're licensed.
I'm sure they'd be happy about that.
Okay, in, in either case, and I'm okay with either way, but in either case, we should send these folks a letter to know what to expect and let, let them know that the select board discussed this and, and why we're doing this, and we, we hope it helps a little bit at least.
By all means, yep.
Can we?
To McDonald.
Can we just not, I mean, half, it, this, this is one of my idiosyncrasies and it's generally the same thing with, um, condominium fees and stuff like that. It's, it's when it's seventy-two fifty, it's, I, 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 I like nice round numbers.
I knew you.
I like fifty, I like sixty, I like sixty-five, I like thirty-five. I mean, I, I just think we should give, uh, my, I, I want to make a motion that we, uh, apply, um, a twenty-five dollar credit for just, for any, uh, alright, wait a minute. Make a motion that we waive the twenty-five dollar fee for any restaurant requesting outdoor seating without a liquor license and for those applications that have been approved, the twenty-five dollar fee to give them a credit of twenty-five dollars towards next year's fees.
Okay, that's a little less than fifty percent, but that's okay.
No, 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 no. That's only for without the liquor license. I'm gonna have a motion on the liquor license.
Alright. So, we have a motion for the twenty-five dollar fee to waive the twenty-five dollar fee by Mr. Second by Mr. Gracie.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Gracie.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
We're so enthused, Frank. Uh, yes.
Mr. Mr. Gracie, we hear it.
Yes.
Mr. Aaron.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Tattelbaum.
Yes.
Another one. Mr. Mickelson, yes. Okay, next.
Alright, I make a motion that any establishment with a liquor license, that requesting outdoor seating, pay an amount of seventy-five dollars for the permit and that for those licenses issued and who have paid a hundred and twenty-five dollars, that they be credited a fifty dollar credit towards next year's license.
Excuse me, but that, that's a little bit dis- uh, confusing, I think, because a hundred and twenty-five includes the food part of it.
Right.
It's purely a hundred dollars for the liquor license.
Okay, alright, alright. Alright, so then I make them, alright, let me, I rescind my motion, that, I make a motion that the liquor license portion of outdoor seating be charged a sum of fifty dollars for the license and then for anybody who has paid that license to date, be, be given a fifty dollar credit towards next year's.
Yep, I'll second that.
Uh, motion for the fifty dollar credit for the liquor license that's been paid and, and the second by Mr. Gracie. Mr. Gracie.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yep.
Mr. Tattelbaum.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
And Mr. Mickelson, yes. Okay, so we'll send them letters. Mr. McGinnis?
You will.
Thank you very much, and I'm sure they'll be happy to see.
And, and by the way, I just wanted to, uh, acknowledge the creative ways that these places have uh, come up with outdoor seating. Um, I've seen some, I've seen most of them actually not by being there, but actually, uh, from social media posts or from different people posting and whatnot. It's, um, I tell you, business ingenuity at its best.
It's, it is wonderful. I drove by a few over the weekend and, uh, I must say, uh, uh, quite, quite a nice job, quite a nice job. I went to one of them on Friday night, Thursday night, and it was great. It was absolutely.
Most of them are actually legal, although we've had a couple that are not legal, but most of them actually have.
I went to the legal one.
I'm sure you did, yeah.
Okay. Um, so I guess we're gonna, the Hubba Master contract will be.
Gonna be continued.
On the July thirteenth, the select board meeting, correct?
Well, no, it's gotta be before the end of the fiscal year.
Oh, alright, okay.
Determine a meeting date.
So we'll have to, we'll have to have a meeting, uh, on Zoom. Alright, fine, uh, and this is a little unhappy news for me. Oh, no, it's not, not yet next. It's one after. Personnel director, I'm sorry, I, I was talking about.
It's good news.
No, well, the good, Personnel Director contract is good news. I just feel, I was looking at Serp Ed and, uh, that's, uh, very, uh, uh, important to me, so, uh, Personnel Director contract.
Uh, one, uh, item on the contract that I, I noticed, so on page two, uh, I have it, it's a, that is a three-year contract, but the dates are two years, so I'm gonna have, if the board votes to approve it, it'll be based on, uh, editing, uh, section two term, uh, se- section A to read two years instead of three years.
Good. Make a motion to approve the contract as modified.
As edited by, yes. Second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Tattelbaum and a motion by Mr. McDonald. Mr. Gracie.
No.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Sharon.
No.
Mr. Tattelbaum.
Yep.
Mr. Mickelson, yes. Motion passes three to two. And with the edit, is that correct, though, Mr. McGinnis? Three to two in favor. Alright, now, I was so excited to talk about this and I'm sorry, Deborah, that you've had to wait through all of this, but I'm sure you've waited through meetings on and on and on in your career, so.
I've become very patient.
I know you showed. Serp Ed awarded for Commissioner of the Year, Distinguished Service Award to Deborah Melino Winder. Our dear favorite, Deborah Melino. Congratulations.
It was, as you know, I've been serving on Serp Ed, um, since I started ten years ago and I have to say that it has evolved tremendously over that ten-year period, thanks to the work of a lot of, hard work of a lot of the commissioners. Uh, we have an organization now that is really devoted to serving the members of the community, of its communities, uh, and a, uh, very forward-looking executive director who is always on the prowl for new grants, uh, for both, uh, individual communities and on a regional basis and that Blue Economy, uh, grant that is going through UMass Dartmouth is in no small part uh, the result of Serp Ed's hard work. So, uh, it's, uh, I was very humbled to receive both of these awards, particularly in the same year, uh, and proud to be part of that organization. So I thank you for letting be, me be your representative to that group.
And my, I must say, um, you, you deserve, you deserve more than that. Honestly.
Thank you.
I mean that sincerely, uh, um, uh, you're just a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful lady, uh, uh, great work ethic and an unbelievable amount of knowledge and we are sure gonna miss you.
Ditto.
Mr. Gracie.
Yeah, I would like to add to that and tell Debra that, uh, I know that she does a great job at everything she does and congratulate her profusely, uh, for, for the awards that you get and any you may get in the future.
Thank you.
And we, with that, we will definitely miss you.
Hmm, very much so.
I won't miss the snow.
We can ship you some.
Overnight.
It would have to be, yeah, otherwise it melts.
We'll send you a container of, of the DPW's plow along with the mailbox.
We'll send you a picture of your mailbox, yeah.
Yeah.
Flipped over. Alright, well, thank you, Deborah.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So, Mr. Tattelbaum.
I, I just, I just go, I remember back when Deb was first hired, I was on finance, I think, and, uh, it was a new position and, uh, new positions, uh, require a lot of imagination and a lot of guts because you're, you're in new territory all the time. And, uh, you didn't waste any time. You hit the ground running and, uh, you put us on the map for the town looking for and finding money. and organize, and then taking on special projects like this one and others. Uh, and I know we'll speak again when your formal time comes, but but uh, an amazing uh effort and passion for the job you do. We're gonna miss you a lot.
Thank you. Well, as in anything, uh, it takes a team to get things to happen, and it, it doesn't happen with just one person. So I think that the town has a, a great team of department heads a- a- all over the place, and each and every day, everyone's putting their best foot, foot forward, despite sometimes very tight circumstances and difficult navigations that we go through. But so it, I think it's a, it's been a interesting and great place to work for. Thank you.
Absolutely the right person for the job, that's.
Thank you.
Sure do love you.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, I guess the next thing we don't have to worry about.
Uh, no, we're fortunate to have a successful town meeting.
Yeah, so uh, the uh very next thing, the COVID nineteen update and.
Town meeting one quick.
Yeah, good, Mr. McDonald, yep.
I know I said my piece at the end of town meeting, but I'll tell you one thing, I did not expect to see on social media um, the, the comments of people in throughout town as to how town meeting went. Um, they were totally thrilled as to what happened. There were some participants um of town meeting members who commented also. Um, you know, and I think that, uh, that in itself speaks a lot, and um, I tell you, you know, again, uh, everybody who put it together, just uh, you know, man, I tell you, that was one hell of a job, you know? And I think maybe now people have a taste for town meeting on a Saturday, you know? It's something to look into in the future.
And you were the one that uh, if, if we all remember, you predicted it and you were right on, spot on, Mr. McDonald.
Yep.
I think I've been around the block a few times, so.
No, good, good for you.
Yeah, more than a few.
Was it, well, Mr. Tattlebaum?
I think, I think, you know, we all, there was concern about uh people uh accepting the electronic issues and computers and Zoom and um, and what people, people are ready for it. I think it's an indication of what we can do to go forward uh with all these kinds of uh uses, uses of technology, a lot of forward thinking. There was a lot of really great participation and thoughts about things, and as I said before, with the charter commission coming and the ten-year plan, I think we have a lot of engaged people who really want to participate, and they proved it the other day. And I think we have a lot to be, look forward to and to be grateful for in terms of uh, a particip- a participation. And that young fellow who spoke up, who was nineteen years old, a town meeting member, he's like, I'm gonna find him and a lot of his friends, because uh he was a great asset in addition to that meeting.
I just, and one of the things I just realized when one of the police off, when, when, one of the new police officers said he's been at town meetings.
Yeah.
A member since eighteen, so have I, and I just realized, I've been doing this, I've been down in town meeting now for forty-five years. God, I feel old.
Didn't, didn't they look young, huh? Again.
My god.
Yeah, I, I think we, every time we see a new recruit, we think it's our youngest son.
Grandchildren.
Yeah, my word, my word. So, thank you, by the way, again, uh, Mr. McDonald, spot on, my friend. Um, COVID nineteen update. Boy, what a, what a presentation this is. Thank you, Mr. McGinnis.
So, the uh, well, town meeting goes right along with our, the COVID update. I mean, it was very successful. I think it was a huge team effort on the town's part, um, you know, from the technical staff to the employees, to the, the select board, to the moderator. So, everybody really pitched in and uh made a yeoman's effort. So, you know, it was uh great to see the teamwork, um, and it will continue on many other projects, but you know, Deb had alluded to it too, a lot of it is teamwork around here, so everyone gets a lot of praise. Um, you know, moving forward from that, so the governor's phase two B starts uh today. So it's been uh an implementation, um, you know, with the outdoor seating, I mean, the indoor seating is allowed. We haven't heard too much, we haven't heard any complaints, uh, so that's good. So hopefully everyone is out there and the people that are licensed for outdoor seating are taking advantage of it. Um, we've uh have all the employees now working in town hall as of today, so and our staff, uh Personnel Director and the Health Director have been working diligently as well to try to get all the offices set up to accommodate people in a safe manner, so they can work and be socially distanced and um, you know, meet all the health standards required by the CDC. Um, and other than that, we're just trying to be business as usual and get back and hopefully to have the building open to the public in some capacity within the next week or so.
Mr. Gracie, please?
Yeah, I just want to congratulate Mr. McGinnis and all the people that helped put the plan together, because it's very thorough and well thought out, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Mc- McDonald.
Yeah, I, I think, I think if you really take a look at what's been going on since March sixteenth in town, um, you really have to um compliment and thank the, all the employees, uh, no matter who they were and what, what form of um assistance they had in, in doing this, because without, you know, you have a plan, but you need to implement the plan. And the implementation is basically legwork by the, by the employees, you know, with the DPW doing um, you know, split weeks, you know, with the teachers doing online education, uh, and, and so on, many, many examples of, of what has been done over this period of time. It's just absolutely phenomenal. Yeah, it's been crazy, it's been wacky. You know, we, we get one information one day and it's refuted the next day, and, or we finds out something about, about what was happening, and then a month later, you know, it's the wrong way of doing things. Uh, but overall, um, you know, this is a time that many of us are not gonna forget ever, and, but more importantly, um, the human, the human aspect of it, the human spirit of cooperation has just absolutely been phenomenal. And um, I, you know, I, I can't thank, I can't thank our employees, uh, all employees, staff, department heads, administrative assistants, assistants, um, clerks, uh, teachers, custodians, um, you know, uh, as to the work that they've done, and, and also importantly, the citizens of our town. Uh, yeah, there have been some off, off things, there've been some crazy things, and, and people have, have complained at sometimes at the wrong things. And, but I think overall, um, you know, that we have done well, and, and um, i- it's a shame that there's some misfortunes over, over the, over the time. Um, you know, it's, it's a shame that people lost loved ones during this, during this time, no matter what. Um, you know, and, and I feel for them. Um, I, I just, I'm just proud of the people in this town. I really am.
It's why I thanked the, the town in the beginning of the meeting. It's uh, it's quite an accomplishment, and uh, we should hold our heads very high, and as I also said, we are leaders, we are not followers. The town of Dartmouth has been leaders for all the years I've been around, and we will continue to do it. Thank you. Mr. Tattlebaum, please.
Uh, Sean, I, Sean McDonald, I, I think he expressed it really well in terms of our whole staff, uh, it's citizens, uh, employees across the entire town. Uh, but it, when reading this document about preparing uh town offices and government to open this, open up yesterday, uh, today, excuse me, uh, the kind of detail that went into that to get that done, considering we're still trying to run the government at the same time. And I have to say, but my point of view is with the kind of leadership it took from the top, from uh town administrator, um, you, it, it's uh, it's unreal to think that you're trying to run it, you run a business, if you will, and alongside it, and create an entirely new environment of uh, a way to do business, and it all done seamlessly. And by the way, throw in a town meeting with um electronic Zoom, uh, it's, it's, the last three months have been incredible, and this town has done incredible things, and uh, the leadership at the top is where it begins, and I appreciate what uh, what Sean McGinnis has done.
Second. Thank you again. Alright, um, annual. Sorry, Mr. Gracie, sorry, I was trying to read the uh.
That's okay.
Next thing up.
Yeah, I just want to make a quick comment that the one thing I will never, my wife and I will never forget about this is we didn't, never realized how old we were until the state and the federal government reminded us of that every day.
Good point, Mr. Gracie. I haven't got there yet.
Yeah, I know, yeah. That's only because you've washed your memory already.
What, what, Sean? What?
Beyond.
Beyond. Oh, it's nice to have a little levity here for a change. Okay, um, annual reappointments and attendance.
Uh, I can provide some input here on some of them. So we, we did get an attendance sheet for the Sister Cities Committee. They had one meeting. Uh, they all attended. Um, the Assistant Harbor Master position does not, they don't meet, that doesn't need an attendance sheet. The, and the Pathways Committee had, Committee had not met this year, so, uh, but they will meet in the future. And then the Agriculture Commission, we, we have not received an attendance sheet for yet.
Well, um, what's the pleasure of the world? Somebody could do the Sister City delegation. It's Diane, let me see if I can get this right. Kellic, Kellica.
Kiltica.
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 Yeah, Kiltica, Killlicut. I've got it as Killlicut.
Kiltica.
Okay, I didn't get a T, so, alright, alright.
I, I'm trying to get to that page. I'm going through the COVID stuff right now, it's like.
Sure.
So we can do uh Kiltica, Diane, for Sister City delegation?
So moved.
Motion?
I've been trying to make a motion to make it easy.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, go ahead. Mr. Gracie, you want him to second that, please?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that. This, this is the hard way, but okay.
Alright, well, that's alright. Um, Mr. Gracie?
Uh, I would like to make a motion that we uh, we approve all those that have either applied with the attendance request or didn't have to.
So you have Suzanne Murray, Lori Russell, Kilsu, um, Lisa Kuzera, and Diane Kiltica.
And not, not Suzanne Murray, we have not heard from the Agricultural Commission.
Right, I guess it's basically all, all, everybody except the Agricultural Commission, yeah.
Right, minus Suzanne Murray.
Second emotion.
Okay, we're motioned in a second. Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Aaron?
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson, yes. All three but one. Miss Suzanne, still waiting on that. Alright, um, all business.
Um, Blitz Corner, uh, no new updates. Uh, Cecil Smith, Mary Robinson, no new updates. Uh, same with Lake Nokachoke or, and the Fishing Bear, no new updates.
Um, I guess we have minutes, uh, minutes June second, twenty twenty, and June eighth, twenty twenty.
They looked up, gave it me, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second for the mo, for the two dates, the June second and the June eighth of twenty twenty. Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yeah.
Mr. Mickelson, yes. Minutes are approved. So, um, I'd like to, I think, hopefully the the DCTV people will put something on the screen about tomorrow's voting places, polling places, should I say? Um, they have changed. Uh, it's been on our town website, it's been on DCTV. Um, hopefully uh they can accommodate us and stick it on the screen, but I'll, I'll go over it now. I'm only gonna mention uh, not where you, where you voted before, for this election, it's only this time for this, this election only, and in these locations. So precinct one is at the Potter School, one eighty-five crossroads. Precinct two is at the Middle School, three sixty-six Slocum Road. Precinct three is at the Potter School, one eighty-five crossroad. Precinct four, also at the Potter School, one eighty-five crossroad. Precinct five, Middle School, three sixty-six Slocum Road. Precinct six, DeMello School, six five four Dartmouth Street. Precinct seven, High School at five 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 Bakersville Road. Precinct eight, at the DeMello School at six five four Dartmouth Street. And lastly, print, uh, precinct nine, at the High School at five 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 Bakersville Road. If you'd like to look at that, um, it's on the website, the town website's on DCTV. Uh, I believe it's on the town clerk's website also. With that being said, we need a motion to adjourn.
Question, please.
Yes, uh, Mr. Gracie?
Yeah, I apologize for not asking this earlier when we were doing uh, the uh, uh, the transfers. Uh, but uh, Chumley's paperwork indicated that there was a tax issue. I, I'm wondering if the tax issue got resolved. I should have asked that before, but I didn't.
Uh, yes, I believe it did. That's why it was put forward.
Okay, because it said see attached, but there was nothing attached, so.
Yeah, it, it, it was.
Okay.
Yes, I have the receipt here.
Thank you very much.
Great, great. That being said, you need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to adjourn in a second. Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson, yes. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Take care.